This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the May 1st, 2024 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call this meeting to order. We do have all commissioners present this evening. At this time, I would ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I would ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public and virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor, non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephones to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd like to announce also that the Board of Commissioners did meet in the executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. And one other announcement this evening, we will recognize a moment of silence for former South Whitehall Township Police Officer David Gross, who passed this past Monday, April 29th. And I'll ask our interim chief, Brown, to please say a few words.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. South Whitehall Township and South Whitehall Police Department are mourning the loss of a dedicated public servant, retired officer David Gross. Dave had over three decades of service with the police department. Prior to being hired by the police department, he worked for Public Works. So he has a lot of time with South Whitehall. He was a committed-to-duty as a field training officer, defensive tactics instructor. He was also one of the original members of the Lehigh County Emergency Response Team. He speaks volumes about his professionalism and dedication to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. Upon his retirement, Dave continued to serve as a police officer with the Quitztown University Public Safety and Police Services, which further illustrates his ongoing commitment to public service. The loss of Officer Gross will undoubtedly be felt deeply by his colleagues, friends, family, and the communities he served. The South Whitehall Township Police extends our deepest condolences to the Gross family for their loss.
Thank you. If we just pause for a moment of silence. South Whitehall Township does extend our deepest sympathy to Officer Gross's family, friends, and colleagues. Thank you, interim chief Brown. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation this evening. Lehigh County Executive Phil Armstrong is here with us. Welcome. If you just turn that microphone on, there's a button right there, the little light that's on green. Are we hearing him?
Right where it says "press here." That's one of my grandkids. You know, I've been here before too since the remodel, but this is beautiful. You really did a beautiful job in this setup here. I'm here tonight, as I come every year. We got a little misunderstood in the beginning of the... You thought I was coming in the beginning. Last year, I did you in the beginning. Now I'm still got five more to go, but we're getting our way through. Things are going very, very well with the county right now. And it's a good year when I can come out and say, you know, we balanced our budget. We've been recognized nationally. We made the front page of the National Association of Counties magazine for our pardon project. We're the only county in the state that actually has a hired position in our public defenders office. We just started this in January. Part-time position. We've already helped 44 people with pardons. And what's so important... Now, these aren't... To be eligible for this, you have to be five years beyond the end of your sentence and not a, you know, and not high economic means either. These are for our low economic... But with the statistics, only 2% of the people that go through this project end up back in jail. So for us to put somebody in our budget to take care of this, we're hoping to save lots of money down the road, not to incarcerate them again. So we're really, really proud of this program. We're also in... Steve, are you the new chief? Or I don't...
I'm interim right now.
Okay. We were working with Chief Dorni, and we're now fast and ready to go. We're getting all the radios for all the emergency police departments, EMSs for the entire county. And from what I understand, we are the only county in the state that the county's doing that, purchasing them all at once by getting them at a better price. And hopefully, we're going to be saving everybody money. And talking with Senator Casey's office and Congresswoman Wild, we might be able to get some federal money here because we are the only ones, and they would like to set an example. They're saying, why aren't the other counties doing this? And why is everybody else on their own setting this up? So we're kind of proud that we're doing that also. With me tonight, I have Adriana with me. She's sitting back there. We are last... One of the things that I wanted to do in my administration was to have a community liaison person, somebody that, when you had a question from any one of the 25 municipalities, towns, townships, et cetera, you'd have a person that you could contact. We brought in that person. It really was working well. So well for him, he's now working in Washington DC. So, but you know what? That's good. You know, when you bring some people in, you don't think that that's going to be their only job for the rest of their lives, and you're hoping that they're able to move up. Well, Adriana was our public relations person, so we've decided to give her two jobs. So, you know, it's like everything else. You think, wherever we can save a few dollars, but still have an outstanding person. And I have her cards. And if you have a question, and it's funny, usually when we leave these meetings, the next day, her phone is ringing, and she will get you the answer. It might not be the one you want, but she will get the answer. ...position that the county has to keep the communication. I am on the National Executive Board of County Executives of America, and if everything goes right, I may be president of that in another year. And my thing is to put Lehigh County on the map in the United States. And I've been working very, very hard the last couple of years to make sure we're at the table. And I've been telling people... In fact, I was at Hershey today speaking to some people. B. Braun was honored today in front of about 500 and some people for their apprenticeship program that they're doing with other manufacturing plants here in the Lehigh Valley. And I'm so proud because I think we're doing things that make sure this is the place you want to live, other than building a warehouse, you know? We're doing well with manufacturing. We're doing well with apprentice programs, and we're still trying to make sure we keep that quality of life. I was smiling today, this morning, first thing in breakfast. Somebody asked, where's a good park in Lehigh County? Did you see that? And they answered, Hubbard Bridge Park, definitely. And some of the activities you have down there are fantastic. But that's what I think we have going here in the Lehigh Valley. We work together to make sure we get the job done. And I've been telling people, I'm putting us at the table on the national level because if you're not on the table, you're on the menu. So I want to make sure we're not on the menu. And we're not anymore. We really aren't. And people all know of the Lehigh County and what's going on here. So I'm very proud of what everybody here has done to make that a great place. And South Whitehall is definitely a very prosperous and doing well township. And we're very, very proud to work together with you. I know we work together on the trails and the parks and et cetera. So, any questions, I guess, is the real reason I come here is for you to give me a hard time.
It's always a pleasure to have you visit with us. I'll open it up to the board if there are any questions.
Well, yeah, I got a couple. I'm part of emergency services, and the radio upgrade is decades overdue. The cost was always a concern, and obviously, from this side of the table, it's a bigger concern. So you said that the county's going to buy them. Is the county then going to sell them to the individuals?
Well, yeah, we're gonna try to... We already accepted the bid. We got the... We had a committee that met. You know, this wasn't just one person saying, let's go with these. But the police chiefs definitely agreed, the emergency management people. And what we're doing now is, how many do we actually need to get? You know, how many this... We're out questioning all of them, so we get the number. You know, we don't want to buy 4,000 if we only need 3,000 because they're...
So could you share that cost per unit to Tom at least, so that we as a board...
Well, once we get all of the total numbers and we put in the, you know, we will have that. And Rick Mulchany will be putting that out to everybody. So we're, right now, I, we're saying approximately, but if we can get a grant, it'll lower it.
Right. So we're looking at the worst-case scenario of what we would be required to pay.
Yeah. You know, they're looking at about 7,000 a rate.
Portable, right.
Yeah.
Unless the mobiles are even more expensive. So from a budgeting point of view, we would... The sooner we could get that, and then if money comes through from whatever source you can get money from, or we can get money from, obviously...
Well, I know Chief Dorni told us he was already planning this in his budget, that he was putting money aside.
Right. But at the time, there weren't... You have a quote, you have a price.
Right.
He didn't at the time. He was just making best guess.
Yes, right. But you were one of the better planners for the future. You really were.
Right. And that's... We now keep doing that.
Yeah. So that, as soon as we get the total count, and it's taking a while to get everybody, you know, all of the EMTs, the fire companies, and police forces, et cetera, we're also paying, you know... This was the Police Chiefs Association. They came to us and asked us if we'd support it. So we gave $100,000 grant to the police chiefs to look at a regionalization of the police, which could... I know, as a Whitehall Township Board President, our biggest, biggest bill was our police force and the overtime. And it's something you're not going to... You mean, safety of your community is number one, but maybe there is some kind of a regionalization where we could kind of chip in and save some money here. So we gave 100,000. That's being studied right now.
So, all right. And I also have to give you kudos for the tax benefit that you gave the volunteers.
Thank you.
Volunteers-ism isn't what it used to be, and any little bit that we can do to thank them and try to keep them saves.
Every one of these meetings that I've gone to, that they're having volunteer firemen problems. It's hard to get people anymore for a commitment. It really is. And that, I thought that was a no-brainer, and our board passed it unanimously.
And I hope they do it again next year.
Oh, yeah. It's in the... One of those budget items now that'll... So, yeah. And we got several hundred people that applied for it, too. So it worked. You know, they took advantage of it. You hate if you come up with a new program and only 10 people, and you think, gee, with all that, you know? But no, it's working. I don't know if it's the reason you're able to keep people or not, but I hope it is one of them anyway.
Well, it's just part of a bigger package that the organizations can then give back to their volunteers and say, thank you. And the county obviously shows that commitment.
My father was the president of the Volunteer Firemen's Federation of the State of Pennsylvania. He was fire chief of my hometown. So, you know, for Dad, I have to definitely, whatever I can. That and farmers, because I love eating. So, you know, we are ranked third in the state for preserving farmland. So we're really doing a good job on that. That's... I'm real proud of that, too.
Thank you.
Excellent questions, Commissioner Price. Thank you. Any other comments? No? Again, on the executive, thank you very much for updating us on what's going on at the county.
Well, you have heard number, and you know where I live. And if you need anything, please just contact us, okay?
Very good. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll press the button up.
Yes, thank you. Have a good evening. Moving on to Agenda Item B. Under Presentations, we have a public hearing for an intermunicipal liquor license transfer. And I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Dave Menhart, to begin this segment of the agenda.
So the subject is... Well, and this is a public hearing, so some of it will be... I'll hand it over to Joe to run that portion of it.
Thank you. This is a hearing authorized under the Pennsylvania Liquor Code. It's with respect to liquor license number R... That's a restaurant license, 12146, as a transfer from Two Farms, Inc., Trading is Royal Farms, to, and forgive me if my pronunciation is off, Narayan Crouppa, Inc. in South Whitehall Township, to property located at 1917 Walbert Avenue. For several years now, the liquor license regulations have authorized transfers from one municipality to another. That's what we're dealing with here. And this particular transfer was requested by a letter from Attorney David C. Berger, by letter of March 2024, for transfer. And the May 1st date today fulfills the 45-day requirement to conduct the hearing and make a decision with respect to this proposed liquor license transfer. There are several requirements for a transfer such as this. One is that there be public notice, and that public notice has been accomplished with the advertising in the Lehigh Valley Press, including the Parkland Press, and proof of publications on file with the township. And that publication occurred on April 10th and April 17th of 2024. The purpose of a public hearing, like all public hearings, is to receive public comment and to offer recommendations. And then ultimately, at the close of the hearing, there's a decision made by the elected officials, in this case, the Board of Commissioners. If the board should approve this resolution this evening, it does not dispense with any other independent requirements that exist under South Whitehall Township ordinances and other requirements, such as code requirements under the Uniform Construction Code, SADO requirements, zoning requirements, et cetera. Those are independent. This will be an approval of the liquor license transfer only. I would also note that by law, the Pennsylvania Liquor Code preempts local regulation in this license process itself. So, for example, it would not be permissible for the board to place a condition on the liquor license that all beer sales must stop at 10:00 PM, as an example. Liquor Code addresses that, and the township cannot. So with... I would also note that per email, the applicant has agreed to pay $500 to help defray the cost of this hearing. With that said, I'll turn it over to the applicant's counsel.
Thank you, Solicitor Zader. And if it may please the board, my name is Dave Berger. I'm the attorney of Norris McLaughlin, represent the applicant. The way I normally handle these hearings is I'll provide an offer of proof. I have a representative of the applicant here, but I'll answer any questions, provide an outline of how they're going to operate, and then if necessary, I would have him come in and be sworn in and state on the record that everything I've told to the board is true and correct as it pertains to the operation.
I think that's an efficient way to handle it, and I certainly support that approach.
Very good.
Thank you. So, like he introduced, we are asking to transfer this liquor license to my client's existing convenience store on Walbert Avenue, specifically 1917 Walbert Avenue. The license is coming from Bethlehem-Lehigh County, specifically the previous Royal Farms development out in Lehigh County. The applicant is proposing to utilize the liquor license to add the convenience of beer sales from the existing convenience store and possibly wine sales as well. The reason I say possibly wine sales is the applicant would have the opportunity to apply for what's called a wine expanded permit, which would allow them to sell wine for takeout consumption from the property. That's not something they can apply for until after they obtain approval for the liquor license at the property. Primarily, it's going to be used for takeout sales. We cannot specifically refuse anyone to sell on premise. There will not be any hard alcohol sold at this property. It's purely for takeout sales, but we can't prevent anyone from purchasing a drink and having a drink on property, but what we can do is limit to one drink per person. I've represented a number of convenience stores, and this is what they do. They don't prevent anyone from drinking on premises, but they restrict them to one drink and then force them to leave the property. There is a requirement for seating for 30 with tables on the property. The applicant will do that as it's a requirement of the liquor code. But to be honest with members of the board, the only people who utilize those tables and chairs are most often liquor control enforcement officers coming in to check and see if they can go ahead and have a drink on premises as to not violate the liquor code. Currently, the client anticipates the footprint of the building is not going to change. The only thing that will probably change is an interior reconfiguration, specifically, some of the shelving will be removed, and an additional cold cooler will be added to the corner of the store. And in that cold cooler will be the location of all of the alcohol. The reason why that's a benefit is that with regards to the hours of operation for the property, they currently operate Monday through Sunday from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Those hours are not anticipated to change. The reason why, except for on Sundays, you cannot sell alcohol between the hours of 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. So the benefit of having the alcohol locked away on premise is that in this cooler, it can be locked from 7:00 to 9:00 to ensure that those alcohol sales will not occur. With regards to security on premises, there are a total of 16 security cameras on premise with 12 monitoring the interior. That includes the registers, entrances, and exits, with four monitoring the exterior of the premises. All alcohol sales will be monitored by the security cameras, and all purchasers will be IDed and carded pursuant to the RAMP guidelines. RAMP stands for Responsible Alcohol Management Program. This is something that all owner or managers have to take, as well as anyone who is making the sale of alcohol. Anyone has to be 18 years old. They're instructed that they have to card everyone who looks 35 or younger. And they're also taught how to spot a visibly intoxicated patron. The one thing that convenience stores have to watch out for is anyone coming in who might already be intoxicated trying to purchase alcohol to go. So it's very important that they're all RAMP trained, and everyone who sells has to be RAMP trained, including the managers and owners. This actual applicant has another store on Cedar Crest already. They have had a liquor license for a few months. They haven't had any violations from liquor control enforcement, so they are very well understanding of the guidelines and everything necessary that they have to do to operate at this new store. They certainly intend to comply with any zoning ordinance issues that they might have. I did a preliminary review with regards to the existing parking. I believe even adding the liquor license here at the establishment, they should still have sufficient parking on the property. And to my understanding, they haven't had any issues with regards to loitering or criminal incidents at the property. So I don't anticipate the additional sales here causing any further issues at the property. So with that, I certainly expect the board might have some questions for me, and I am certainly able to answer anything the board might have.
Very good. Thank you. I'll open it up to the board if there are questions.
Yeah. One of the requirements under the liquor code is that because they have to purchase a restaurant liquor license for a convenience store, you see those things at supermarkets, there is a requirement under the liquor code that you have to have seating available for 30 patrons at any one time. So under this requirement in the license area, they have to have seating for 30 within the store.
Is that going to be a problem for them, where the sidewalk is, or...
No, the scene's going to be inside, not outside.
Oh, inside?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I thought you meant outside.
So how does that affect the capacity of the building with the convenience store? So when you put tables and chairs, it affects the capacity that they can have, so like maximum capacity of people, because they're going to change the interior configuration, right?
And they would still need to comply with all zoning and building code requirements? So that you would be filing separate permits as such, correct?
What would be filed is normally an amended use permit. It's an existing convenience store. Looking under your zoning ordinance, if I recall correctly, with regards to the sale of alcohol, there's nothing specifically restricting it. It's not filing a separate use permit for a restaurant. It would still be a use permit as a convenience store, but I would add for the permit, the associated sales of alcohol.
Right. Because it's retail sales is the use which is permitted to sell, which is permitted for alcohol sales.
Correct.
And the interior reconfiguration, because you're going from stacks of stuff that they sell, food and all that, they're taking... They're going to have to take that out, put tables in, so that affects their occupancy.
Potentially, yeah. We would have to review that under zoning and building.
And I mean, this is... It's not particularly an issue that I haven't run in before with these convenience stores. It's frankly a problem that I have to deal with as it pertains to the liquor code. There's no way for me to have that waiver of those 30 tables and chairs. It's quite frankly, I would say, a detriment to my client because they have to remove shelves. They have to... I mean, if you've been inside the store, my understanding is, you go in the store, there's coolers, and there's three lines of shelving. Then that extends more or less from the front of the store to the rear of the store. The proposed plans that I've seen in draft form are that the existing shelving that goes all the way to the back of the store, imagine that being cut in half, and then installing a cooler, excuse me, in the corner, and then fitting in the, what I think you might amount to what looks as tabletop bar top style tables and bars, ultimately to give them a minimum of a 12-inch by 18-inch, what ultimately a size of a placemat in front of each chair. Frankly, it's quite annoying because no one ever really imbibes on premises. So frankly, I don't expect or anticipate any change to foot traffic, the amount of people in the store at any one time. It's just something that has to be there. So the liquor... Anytime a liquor control enforcement officer comes in, they see that there's available seating for 30.
Any other questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners?
Any other question? This was advertised twice on April 10th and 17th. Has the township or have you received any communication from any residents with questions or concerns on this application?
I'll defer to staff on that question.
The township has not, to my knowledge.
No, and there's members of the public here this evening, and if they have any questions, I'm certainly willing to answer them.
Very good.
That was the next part. Are there any comments or questions from anyone in the public?
You need to come up to the microphone. I'm sorry. The people that are online can't hear if you're not there. I apologize.
There is. How many?
Give us your name.
I'm Greg Pivason, 1005 Bryan Street, Allentown. Greg Pivason, P-I-O-V-E-S-A-N. How many tables? Is that five?
I'm sorry. It's... You would think, depending on... I believe it's going to be four tables, I think.
Four tables.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public present? Any comments or questions from anybody online? Or none? Final comment or question for the board?
Anything further?
Anything further from the applicant?
Nothing further.
I'll then close this public hearing, and, Madam President, there's an opportunity for a vote if you wish.
Very good. Thank you. Attorney Zader, at this time, we have two actions of the board. The first is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving the request of Narayan Crouppa Incorporated to transfer restaurant liquor license R-12146 into South Whitehall Township. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next action... Next action is a motion to adopt said resolution of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving the request of NAR Norian Crouppa Incorporated to transfer restaurant liquor license number R-12146 into the township of South Whitehall. Do I have a motion to approve said motion? Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item four, courtesy of the floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to approach the board?
Can I say something? This is just for public.
Is there anyone online with public comment? There is not. Okay, moving on to agenda item five, meeting minutes. The meeting minutes from the Board of Commissioners, April 17th, 2024 meeting have been distributed to the board in advance for your review. Are there any comments or questions? I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item six, ordinances, six A. We have a motion to advertise for adoption and ordinance amending chapter 274 Sewers and Sewage Disposal in the codified ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall to establish a new Part Six titled On-Lot Sewage Disposal and Providing for Definitions, Designation of Township Sewage Enforcement Officer, General Requirements, Application Procedures and Permit Issuance, New Sewage Systems, Repair Sewage Systems, General Department Requirements, Inspections, Application and Review Fees, Revocations and Reinstatement of Permits, Review of Revocations and Denials, Waiver of Liability, Nuisances and Penalties, Severability, Failure to Enforce Not a Waiver, Repealer and Effective Date. And I'll turn this over to our Department of Community Development Director, David Manhart.
Thank, excuse me, thank you. At the January 17th, 2024 meeting, we presented the draft on sewage disposal ordinance. Prior to that, we had been doing some review of our fee schedules and permit process. Came to our attention that we really should have this ordinance so that we're consistent with state regulations. So we brought that model ordinance to you at that meeting. It was, there was a motion to send it to legal for review. It's had that review and now it's back. The attached ordinance is consistent with the Pennsylvania Sewage Facilities Act. We've worked with the sewage enforcement officer to review that, both with Jennifer Aldifer and Tom have provided valuable input and we're ready for advertisement.
Very good, thank you, Dave. I'll open it up to the board if there are any comments or questions on this ordinance before we make a motion to advertise. Hearing and seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Does any public comment on this item? Anything online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve advertisement of said ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Dave. Agenda item seven A, resolutions. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, authorizing the township manager to execute an amended and restated agreement with UGI Utilities Incorporated, providing for a cost sharing arrangement for road restoration work to occur in South Whitehall Township. I'll ask our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to present.
Thank you. Administration is looking to move forward with the cost share agreement with UGI. The cost share agreement with UGI is for the work they have done within the township on various roads. This agreement is in the amount of $442,670. The action we're requesting is for the township manager to be able to execute an amended, restated agreement with UGI Incorporated, providing for a cost share arrangement for road restoration work to occur within South Whitehall Township.
Good, Herb, excuse me, thank you very much. The only question that raised in my mind when I read this was I was wondering if it was this paving season or will it be for next year?
This agreement will be for next year's paving work, yes.
Very good, thank you. I'll open up to the board if there are any questions.
So Herb, just to clarify, it will begin next year, next paving season, and it will take two years. Is that, did I read that correctly?
This, this work will be completed in 2025. We give ourselves up to two years of the agreement to get the work done, but once we get all the final signatures and the agreement is finalized, they will cut the check this year for us. We just have two years to complete the work.
That's just repaving what they dig up.
Yeah, how it works is, the reason we do the cost share is where they dig a lot of times is only on one half of the road. They don't touch the other side. By the excavation ordinance we have in place, they would only be required to do a half mill and overlay. So how we work it is they pay for all the blacktop and we pay for the milling part and then we lay the material. So it's a, it's a win for both sides to be able to work together and get this accomplished.
Any other comments from the board? Or any public comment? Anything online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the township manager to execute an amended and restated agreement with UGI Utilities? I'll make that motion. Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Herb. Then item seven B, we have a resolution extending a conditional offer of employment for the entry level, entry level position of patrol officer in the township's police department to candidate number 47073, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty. And I'll ask our interim chief Brown to present this agenda item.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We are looking to move forward for our next eligible candidate on the civil service list. Our previous candidate withdrew from the process. Our next candidate is number 47037, requesting approval to grant the conditional offer.
Very good, thank you. Are there any board comments or questions? Any public comment? Nothing? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
Smooth. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, chief. Then item seven C, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Aesthetic Surgery Associates Medical Office Building. I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present.
Thank you. This is an application to develop the property located at 1619 Hausmann Road. The plan proposes to construct a two-story medical office building and parking lot. The property is served by Public Water and Public Sewer and is owned highway commercial. 1619 Hausmann Partners LLC is the owner and applicant. At their April 11th, 2024 meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of the major plan with 17 conditions and six favorably recommended waivers and deferrals. The applicant is here to answer any questions.
Good, thank you, Dave. Good evening.
That's Patrick Lunsen Booba, representing the applicant, and with me is a actual principal in the applicant, if there are any questions for him, and also the civil engineer to answer any of the engineering questions. We, as, as was stated, and as the chair knows, we got a recommendation for approval from the planning commission. There is a resolution. I believe my client has signed and returned that resolution, so we're okay with all of the, the conditions that are set forth therein. We'd be glad to, though, for those who aren't familiar, for the engineer to run through any of the detail. We can just answer questions. You can tell us your preference and we'll be glad to, to adjust.
If you want to just give us a brief overview, I think that would be a good idea.
So the project's located at 1619 Hausmann Road. It's the medical office building, two-story, I believe, approximately 32,000 square foot. We have a parking lot that has 87 or 85 parking spaces. There's two additional parking spaces that will be provided interior to the building, be a overhead garage door. Those are going to be private spaces for the, for the doctors that are there. Public water, public sewer. We've worked through the two, two letters we've received from your engineer. We've worked through, made some revisions to the plans. We have sidewalk along the frontage. We're providing roadway widening in compliance with Sado landscape lighting, stormwater requirements. We're working through the MPDS permit process right now with DEP, and that's all moving forward as well as the sewer planning process. So we're, we're here to discuss the plan and, and the waivers. If there's any questions specific to the site, I can answer. I'd be more than happy to.
Excellent, thank you. Before I open up to the board, I will ask our township engineer, Tony Talarida from Pittcock, if you have any additional engineering comments for the board.
No, we do not. This went through the planning commission, was recommended. I do commend the applicants for coming in for a pre-application meeting with the township. It seemed to make it a lot smoother process, but we worked through a lot of the big, heavy, heavy lifting, and we feel it's ready for recommendation for approval.
Excellent, thank you. And we do have our alternate solicitor, Elisa Pereira, this evening as well. Did you have any legal comments for the board?
Nope, I had an opportunity to review all the review letters and the resolution, and everything is in order, and I have no issues with proceeding with the recommendation for approval.
Very good, thank you. At this point, I'll open up to the board if there are any comments or questions for the developers team. None? Is there any public comment on this? None. Hearing and seeing none, then do I have a motion to adopt resolution granting preliminary final approval?
I'll make a motion.
To a plan entitled Aesthetic Surgery Associates Medical Office Building. We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Thank you, Attorney Pereira. Moving on to agenda item eight, motions. Eight A, we have a motion for approval of improvement security release certification number three for Ridge Farms Phase 1A. Again, I'll call on our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart.
So this is a, we've had a couple of security releases for Ridge Farm 1A. Typically, as projects move along the process, as things get done, they'll look to reduce the security. It's kind of a perfunctory review. The engineers review that things are completed and then comes up with that new estimate.
Very good, thank you.
If there's any questions, we can answer.
Very good, thank you. Again, before I open up to the board, I'll ask our township engineer if there's any other engineering comments for the board to consider.
No, thank you, thank you. This is, the third of the releases are usually monthly, but we're comfortable with the amount released.
Excellent, very good. Are there any board comments or questions? Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Then item eight B, we have a motion for approval of inflow and infiltration, I and I capital improvements work for 2024. I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to present.
Thank you. The Public Works Sewer Department is respectfully requesting a motion to approve advanced rehabilitation technology to perform manhole lining in the amount of $250,000. This work is required to be done by the DEP for our sewer reduction plan. We will be starting in areas MS 54 and MS 56, with all the manholes that are connected to the trunk lines that run to Klein's Island. Those are ultimately the conveyance lines from all the subdivisions that haul all the sewage to Klein's Island. This year, will we be lining 65 manholes with the average depth of 11 feet. On April 18th, we held a luncheon learn here at the township building with the surrounding municipalities that are also signatories to Klein's Island. We had 35 people attend this demo from all the signatories. The action we are requesting is a motion to approve the sanitary sewer, I and I work with advanced rehabilitation technology for $250,000. Just so you know, in the packet, when you got the quote, you seen their quote came back to do those 65 manholes at $202,345. The reason we put the contingency in there is if we have any active infiltration coming through at the time before they conceal it, it must be grouted, which is $125 per gallon or $250 per hour after the first two gallons are used. So that's why we put that contingency in up to 250,000. In that budget line, we did spend $18,285 earlier this year to cover the sewer man pan lids to stop some infiltration from coming in the top of the manholes. With this $250,000, that will leave us a balance of $31,715 in this account.
Very good, thank you, Herb. I'm just curious, what part of the township is this project going to take place? I know you said MS 54.
It's MS, what the maps? 56, I can tell you, is down in the Presidential Village area, and MS 54 is down by the Kilmer area. So we're going to look to get those trunk lines sealed up, all the manholes, because that's where we have our high spikes when it rains. So that's when the creeks come over, the little swales come over, that's where we believe is the infiltration. And we looked at some previous maps that were done by Pittcock in the past, and these lines were already called out in that area. So this way, we went with those lines right next to the creek. If we put this 250,000, we should see a reduction right away if this is going to solve part of our problem. The other signatories are also getting quotes from this company now too, and I know a lot of them are looking to move forward also.
Excellent, thank you. Are there other board comments or questions?
How long do you think this will take?
With the quote he gave us, I believe he said he could be in and out in about three, four weeks.
Starting?
He said he could be here within four to six weeks to start it also.
So would you be able to run a report August or September of this year compared to August or September from two years ago about the inflow into Klein's Island to see if the decrease?
Yes, what we can do is pull the data from the sewer meters, yes. So we could pull it as he's going, if we get a heavy rainstorm, to see if it reduced at all. And what we would have to do is just reach out to the company that logs all our numbers for the stuff from two years ago to get those reports.
Just, you could show us, the board and the public, that the money that we're investing is, is making a positive impact in reducing what we're sending down to Klein's Island.
Yes, 100% we can do that. And just so the other thing that's covered here, every manhole they line gets stamped with a serial number and comes with a 10-year warranty on the work also.
Because we've been sealing manholes for a couple of years now.
Yes, but the way you were sealing manholes is not from the top to the bottom, is all you were doing was putting chimney caps on. This is going to line from the very top of the bottom of the lid lip, all the way to the bottom, all the way to the trough. So it's a totally different technique of how these will be lined compared to what was being lined before.
Other questions? None? Public comment? Anything online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Smooth. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then item eight C, we have a motion for approval of capital radio purchases for emergency management services department. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present.
Thank you. As you heard earlier from County Executive Armstrong, the Lehigh County Board of Commissioners and administration are proceeding forward with a project to replace existing networks being used as a collective communication system to dispatch police, fire, emergency, medical and other services. Lehigh County has signed a professional services agreement with Tactical Public Safety LLC to design to design and install turnkey large-scale digital P-25 trunked radio networks for the replacement of the existing fixed network. So as a result of this, Emergency Management Services in South Whitehall Township will need to update their radios in use. The intention is to utilize existing and budgeted funds this year, and then to finish the rest of the project in twenty-five, 2025, using additional budgeted funds. The county's system is not anticipated to go live until 25 or 2026. Price quotations were obtained by Jeff Kelly, Director of Emergency Management Services, with the pricing ranging from $64,417.28 to $128,288.62. Using available funds, Emergency Management Services can order the following radios that will be compatible with the county's new networks. So you would have four TP-9800 multi-band portable radios, so that's $23,761.40. And then you would have four single-band portable radios, $19,088.60, as well as two single-band control stations, $10,480.48, for a total of $53,330.48. With those purchases, only two single-band one-piece radios would be needed next year, just under $10,000. So at this point, you have $50,000 set aside for a capital radio purchase purpose. So two motions are requested, the approval of the use of those funds for $50,000, and approval of a capital radio purchase with two-way communications, Co-Stars contract number 0128, I'm sorry, E22241, $53,330.48. Again, using $50,000 that are set aside, and then on the general fund, budgeted funds this year, $3,330.48, thereby leaving two, twenty-two, just over $2,200 in the general fund GL account for the remainder of that fiscal year. So with respectfully request approval of those two motions.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for including the Lehigh County Assessment Survey in the packet for our review. Very lengthy, very, a lot of information there, but very useful, thank you. I was just curious, given the information both from the county executive and this information in our packet, at some point, I'm assuming we will see future requests for radios for both police and fire moving forward?
Yes. So as indicated by County Executive Armstrong, the county administration is currently working on obtaining survey data on what exactly will be needed from, from all of the police, fire, and EMS units. So they will be circling back with us to do that inventory. So South Whitehall has been very proactive. We've already reached out to, to fire chiefs, as well as, as indicated earlier, the police department has, has been steadily replacing radios. We will probably be coming to the board, but before the end of the year, for, for use of ARPA funds for some additional police radios that will be needed. We're putting together a presentation for the board on that, on that item. And then fire, we need to see what funding options are available. What's the lowest cost option for the residents and for the township to, to have the best cost benefit ratio?
Very good, thank you, Tom. Other questions on this agenda item?
We have to do it now. So the way he was discussing it, there may be other funds available, or the county may pick up some of the costs of the radios. So...
That's possible, yeah.
So can we put this off or table it for a few months till we see what the, one, what the county's going to do? And number two is, a tri-band radio is much more expensive than a dual-band radio, and since one of those bands is going to go away, which is the VHF radio, why would we spend the money on a tri-band radio when we know it's going away in two years and wait and get a dual-band radio, which would save us money?
The fiscal questions, you, they, basically, these radios are under the pricing that, that, that the county would be giving us at this point, without any additional influx of funding. That's my understanding. So the, the quote is less than the Harris radios that were, would be coming from the county contract. To answer your question though, to be very clear, if the county's able to find an alternate funding source, or if the township's able to find an alternate funding source, you, you are correct. The price may be overall lower, so I don't want to mislead you there. But these, this is currently a price that is lower than what would be offered from the county contract. That's my understanding. The technical questions, I was relying on, on Jeff Kelly. So if there's an opportunity, we can go back and review it and table it for tonight, then there's no urgency. We certainly can do that tonight.
Just if there's a, you know, the quote is only good for so many days, but it sounds like it's a Co-Stars.
That's correct, yeah.
So there's no, we don't hit, the, the quote is good for thirty days, because since it's Co-Stars, it's good for...
Correct. Yeah, we, we, there's no, there's no urgency tonight, don't have to do it tonight. And we could certainly come back, get answers on those. I don't know the answers to the, to the technical side of it, so I could certainly obtain that information.
Yeah, because, like I said, I, I know the cost for tri-band, and I know the one band is for the VHF that's just going away, that if we just wait a little bit, dual-band is a little bit less than a tri-band.
Yeah, the question I was, I asked, ten, is will this work with the new system? And absolutely it will, but if there's a more efficient way of doing it, we certainly can explore that.
I have no objection to tabling, and if there's questions outstanding this evening, there's no urgency to approve this tonight.
I have one quick question. If we table it tonight, and we do find out that there is an urgency, and we do need to go forward with this, when Lehigh County does secure their funding, are we eligible for any type of reimbursement?
I don't know, because I don't know what funding they're securing. That makes sense. Yeah, so typically in grant funding, it's, it would not be eligible if you buy it now, because if it's a grant. But to answer your question specifically, if there's other funding sources, they might be flexible with that. I just, typically, what you see is if you buy something now, and this grant contract doesn't cover it now, then no, it would not be reimbursable. But I know the county's leveraging multiple funding sources, so there could be a possible scenario there. Again, it's not extremely urgent at this, as we sit here right now, because it's not going live for a couple of years.
Any further discussion of the board? Is there any public comment? At this time, entertain a motion to table this agenda item?
I'll second.
I'm, I'll make the motion.
And motion is second?
Can I second?
We have a motion is second to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries to table, five to zero. And item nine, correspondence and information items. Tom, if you'd review powers and commissions for this?
Okay, thank you. So upcoming meetings are posted on the website for further details. Monday, May sixth, seven PM, we have the Public Safety Commission meeting. Tuesday, May seventh, six PM, actually, I'm sorry, no, that is going to be canceled. Transportation plan will be rescheduled. We're going to do that in a, in a different format, probably on a weekend date to try to gain more interest in that, in that feedback.
Very good.
Wednesday, May eighth, is ten AM, is our Civil Service Commission meeting. Thursday, May ninth, seven PM, Planning Commission meeting. Monday, May thirteenth, seven PM, Parks and Recreation Board meeting. Tuesday, May fourteenth, six PM, Crime Watch meeting. And Wednesday, May fifteenth, seven PM, Board Commissioners meeting.
Very good, thank you. And item ten is direction discussion, and on the agenda, we have review of the South Whitehall Landscapes Plan for Open Space Historic Agricultural and Natural Resource Preservation. I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart.
Yes, so we have been working on the landscapes plan. We've had the public engagement portions, steering committee meetings. Right now, we're working on putting the plan together. We've worked with Michael Baker International to help with some graphics and helping with layout. We thought it would be a good idea to review the open space chapter, because that's kind of the culmination of all of it. This is where we're at now with this open space chapter draft form. We're hoping to get a full draft copy to you in the coming weeks. But I think we can kind of review this kind of high level. The biggest thing that we've kind of learned through the comprehensive plan process is making sure people understand and on both sides, and everybody has a common understanding of what we're talking about. So we've used the concept of place types. In this context, we're defining open space in different types of open space. So find, having that understanding of what open space is, is kind of the foundation for moving forward with any planning efforts, and how we can incorporate it into additional planning and zoning efforts. So with that, I can hand it over to Chris.
Thank you. So as Dave mentioned, we wanted to really take an opportunity to have sort of an explanation of open space, which is a term that is often thrown about and can mean a lot of different things. So working with our team and our consultants, we have taken a stab at really classifying the types of open space that we see in South Whitehall and that we would like to see in South Whitehall. The benefits of this is that it gives us kind of that collective vocabulary to refer to different types of open space, whether it be with this board, with our Park and Recreation Board, with the Environmental Advisory Council, or with the land development side of things. So we look at this down the line as eventually being uses that we can incorporate into our zoning schedule and into the subdivision land development ordinance, so that we can have an expectation of what the types of open space we can expect when there is, say, a land development plan, or how we are managing different types of open space that we own as a township. We have a lot of public parks, different scales and sizes. We have some open areas, we own some agricultural area with the example of the Davis Smith Preserve. So what you see on the screen here at the bottom is what we call a transect. And we had described this a couple of months ago. A transect is used in planning to really describe kind of the transition of different levels of development. So we've used that concept here, going from, on the left-hand side, our wild areas, and on the white, on the right-hand side, our more plazas, pocket parks. The idea here is, this is typically the kind of open space that you see in closer proximity to developed areas. So on the left-hand side, you have more of what we're calling our wild areas. This is where you have larger tracts of forest, you have not really a management structure associated with that. It's nature as nature is. As we move forward, one of the concepts that we would like to talk about is the managed natural area. This is where we're kind of looking at either introducing nature to somewhere where there isn't as much there, or providing more of a management structure to some of our forested areas. And then you kind of get into the agricultural pieces with our farms. And then really, the, the four on the right-hand side of the screen are parks, are utility areas, and our plazas and pocket parks. This is what we're almost referring to as our civic open space areas, where we would see this more where there's a lot more human interaction. These are a lot closer to developed areas, whether it be within a neighborhood or just outside of a neighborhood, as opposed to the sort of left-hand side, which is more on the fringe of some of our developments. So one of the, one of the processes that we've looked at in helping to further define the open space is giving examples of where we typically see this open space, also kind of a general guideline to the typical size that they usually are. Ownership is important when we talk about what is our preservation mechanism to preserve open space. There's different preservation mechanisms that would look at a property being owned completely in public by the township or by a government agency, but there's also preservation mechanisms where the land itself is privately owned, but the open space is protected. We have, again, the recommended preservation methods, whether that be fee simple acquisition, and basically the township acquiring it and owning it, managing it. An easement, where the township holds a right to that property and enforces that right to make sure that it's protected. A deed restriction is a, almost a lesser level of the easement, where there's a requirement for the property to be preserved in one form or fashion. And zoning is a combination of a, a number of things, looking at, using our zoning ordinance and the codes allowed to the township to actually encourage the preservation of open space with land developments, whether those be privately owned, but encouraging these types of open spaces that we're introducing. And then the, the final piece of it is an idea of recommended maintenance. The expectation of maintenance, so for some of these areas, as I mentioned, sort of the, the wild areas, for example, there's really not any maintenance involved in that. So it's good for these considerations when we're looking at potentially purchasing open space, or how we can maybe take a parcel that we already have, change the, the intent of that open space, but what are the parameters of what, what are the maintenance parameters that we need to consider for that? So limited means that these areas require almost seasonal or annual maintenance, whether that be mowing a field once a year, or even, even just cleaning up an area. Regular is, you know, daily or weekly, you can look at this as most of our parks. And then the intensive is areas that need very specialized maintenance. This is where we have like our playground inspectors, or if we have a very intensive area of extensive landscaping. This also ties in with some of the privately owned areas, like our agriculture, which is very intensive maintenance. So we'll kind of just run through briefly, just some examples of what we're talking about. So again, the, the wild areas, you think of this as your forest. These are kind of our conservation type of areas. Again, away from more people where they're typically seen, that doesn't necessarily mean that there aren't people going there. It's just, it's not typically in the middle of a neighborhood. Really, the, any, any method of preservation can be used here, whether we're owning it ourselves, or we're protecting an important forested area through easement. We can apply certain restrictions that we're exploring through some of the recommendations out of the landscapes plan and zoning, certainly. And this also ties into some of the recommendations, such as some ordinances that we'd be proposing, whether it be steep slope ordinance or woodlands preservation ordinance that would prevent development on specialized tracts of woodlands. Again, maintenance would be really zero to, to limited in this. As we move along, it's getting more into a little bit more connected people, a little bit more maintenance intensive, our managed natural area. This is, if you can think of maybe a, an intended wildflower meadow, something that is planted. We look at this as visually appealing. It may not be as used heavily as recreation land, but it's certainly something visible from the public. And again, there's a lot of different methods to preserve through here. Some of the recommendations, when looking at managed natural areas in the private ownership, would be requiring native plant species, requiring certain design aesthetics when it comes to open spaces that aren't necessarily park properties. Our large farms are, the farms that are really over ten acres. These are typically monoculture, cornfields, soybeans, that sort of thing. The primary use of this land is, is agriculture. Sometimes there's a house on it or a barn on it. But the, the recommended method to preserve this area is through easement. The county executive was here talking about the impact that Lehigh County has had on... The county executive was here talking about the impact the Lehigh County has had on farmland preservation. Now, there is an opportunity to own farms for the township. We do own the Davis Smith property, which is currently in agricultural use. But typically, we would recommend preserving these through easement to ensure that the farm is protected.
And just to kind of highlight, one of the things that came out of all the meetings that we've had is, this is a perfect example, the agricultural classifications came out of that meeting, where we had a large farm owner, we had kind of a middle-sized farm operator, and then we had a market farm. So a lot of these concepts were developed through that process and that public engagement and doing research and stakeholder interviews. We could go through all of them. I think if there's any questions, we can kind of, on anything specific, we can get into more detail. But I think, you know, the concept of having these different open space categories is really the big takeaway and how we can use those. So I mean, if we can keep going through, or?
I think we certainly have a nice broad overview. Thank you. This document was, was really interesting to read. It's a lot of information here. And certainly, the variety of open space options that I've never seen laid out the way that they are here. So thank you. Farmettes and market farms, something I've never heard discussed in the township as we talk about potential saving open space for the good of the community. So thank you for bringing this to us. A lot of work has gone into this, and I'm excited for the community to see this as well. But thank you for that.
I agree. I just have two suggestions, and maybe this will be in the final landscapes plan. I think we're all really, really excited to see that, and this is certainly a great sampling of part of that. The first, I know over the summer and through the workshops and some of the work you guys have done, you've talked about different avenues for preservation, funding sources, referendums, et cetera. One thing I'd recommend is if you can, if you're able to, along with each of these classifications, include, you know, what are, what are some of the options and avenues for preservation? You know, if you, if you have an open space referendum, how can you word it so you can cover, you know, broad open space? How you can word it so you can cover just sort of the natural, more natural areas and farmland? Things just as we go through moving from the plan ultimately to action and means of preservation, it would be nice to just sort of have that as a guide, see that, oh, this is not going to apply here, and you know, maybe we should do this, or we should do that, or these types of funds are best for these types of preservation, just, just so we're sort of guided in what to look for. And then the second, also using the classifications, I know, I believe our last meeting, if not the one before, when we discussed moving forward with an overlay ordinance to try to, rather than obtain land via taxpayer dollars, you know, sort of incentivizing developers to preserve in their own projects as they develop their own land. Is there any way we can develop, obviously, if we work these into ordinance, into zoning classifications, and then we have an overlay, you know, even varying incentives depending on what type of open space? You know, rather than say, well, you know, you're going to develop, you have higher density here, but you have to preserve 70% open space. Can we build in different incentives around these categories? You know, I can foresee an instance where a developer who purchases a farm wants to develop it, opts into our ordinance, so they're sort of maximizing their profits. But also, there's, there's sort of the added benefit if they keep the rest of the land as farmland, or they keep the rest of the land as undeveloped woodlands. You know, it's, it's a benefit to the township, but also it's a benefit to them. They don't have to spend the money, you know, regrading the farm to turn it into grass or a park. They don't have to worry about planting. They don't have to worry about landscaping. So maybe as we're working through that, if we can have different levels of incentives, depending on what we want, that way, you know, like we talked about last time, it's a benefit to the developers, it's a benefit to the township. We preserve open space. Just two things to think about.
Yeah. To the, to the first question, one of the pieces that's immediately after this section is kind of a breakdown of those preservation methods and, and kind of examples of how we can actually, as a township, kind of take these pieces and put them to action. What, what is an easement? What's a conservation easement? How can we, through zoning, encourage things like conservation subdivision and break that down a little bit more? I like the comment on how can we apply some of the funding mechanisms to that? I think the intent that we've been kind of throwing around is using the, it's why we like to have everything very much in a, this, this term means this, so that it's very easy for the public to understand, it's very easy for the private community to understand. So if there's, if the township pursues, say, the EIT referendum, we can point back to this plan and say, these are the types of open spaces that we're, we're looking to preserve. And then there's also the mechanisms that we could use. It's not just easements, but it's also fee simple in there. But we can certainly try to make that a little bit clearer in the final plan. To the final comment, the, that's sort of why we have almost this, it's not defined here, but this split of our sort of civic open spaces versus conservation open spaces, exactly to your point of oftentimes, right now, when we get a, a land development in, they might look at what is the required open space under our ordinance. That's great from an acreage standpoint, a square footage standpoint, but that doesn't necessarily mean what we're getting out of it. A lot of times, that can be a large stormwater management area. So the intent of breaking these down is for us to, especially with the ordinance overlay we're proposing, is actually look at how we can use both sides of the civic open space and the conservation open space as ways for allowing, unlocking some of those incentives. For example, if you preserve more of the conservation area, you can develop in a smaller footprint, maybe at a higher density, but you still need to have a requirement for the civic open space. So we're kind of getting both of those, but we're, and that goes back to some of the evaluation we're doing. How are we targeting the areas that we really need to be on the left-hand side of the screen? What are the important resources that we have? We all heard from our farmers last year, it's hard to have intact farms. So how can we preserve the largest amount of farmland that we can that's still intact that works? We have limited natural resources. How can we identify the most suitable natural resources to preserve and require those to be preserved, not just, you know, the 5% in the middle that's built around? Whereas if a developer opting into the overlay ordinance can preserve those areas, then maybe they can develop where it's more suitable for development closer to the road or what have you.
I just think it's a great, you know, thinking about discussions of development and sort of, just my own perspective observing it over the last five or so years, you know, if a developer's going to develop a piece of property, they're going to have a building or higher density housing, and the rest is open space, it's a lot cheaper for them to, to leave it as wooded, or to leave it untouched as farmland, than be forced to put in a park, paths, fields, associated maintenance. And on the, on the other side of that, you know, we have a lot of great parks in the township. Maybe the residents, instead of seeing another field or another park, would like to see more farmland, more woodland. So it's, it's actually like the, the perfect middle point between the developer's interests and the township's preservation interests if, you know, sort of meet that preservation goal without, you know, ruining this, this beautiful natural space that we have, but also, you know, lessening the, the cost and the burden on developers as well.
Yeah, I think we're hoping that the, the pieces of this plan can really help get ahead of developments before they come in, so that our intent is known from what we're looking to preserve, and that it's clear on, you know, what our process would be as we're reviewing this.
Any other comments on the board? Or any public comment? Nothing online. Thank you both for all the work that you've committed to this plan to date, and we look forward to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pieschel, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Two Saturdays ago, PYC, the local youth association, had their opening day at Grand Lawn Park, and Andrew Gargre did a great job putting it together. But I do want to send kudos to Herb and the parks folks. I think that park is the best baseball field, best park that we have in the township, and you guys did a great job getting it ready, just making special for the kids. I also like to thank interim chief Brown. I don't know who the officers were, but they were riding their bikes that day, and a couple of residents came up and were, were happy to see, I guess would be the right terms, the officers out and about, intermingling with the residents and, and being visible and, and doing that. So thank you, they were happy. It's always good to hear people say happy things sometimes. So thank you both, and pass it along. The other thing is our environmental advisory committee, did they have their first meeting, I think? How'd that go with the new, that was their first meeting, right?
It went very well. That meeting really set the template for the work plan that will be developed to guide their actions over the next course of the remainder of the year and so forth.
Good. And last thing, with the development ridge farms, there's some concerns with specifically foxes now, but as they continue up the ridge and start displacing some of these wild animals, where could the residents go for guidance to help with, I don't know, managing is the right word, but as these animals' homes start getting removed, they're going to start going into, into the neighborhoods and then obviously causing some headaches maybe for the, for the residents? What, what can they do? Who would they call? I, I don't know how you, I mean, the farmers, you know, when the deers eat, the farmers, they can go to like the ag and, and seek relief. I don't know what residents can do, or?
Yes, so the appropriate entity is actually the game commission. So they would, they would be the starting point. And then if they don't have jurisdiction or, you know, or can't respond, then there are some nonprofit organizations as well that they might be able to point you to, but I would start with the game commission.
Okay, thanks.
And a lot of times, it'll come through our code enforcement officer.
So they call the code enforcement? Is that a good place to start?
It's, and he can provide that contact information for the mission game or game commission. So a lot of times, he receives those calls and he'll process them that way.
A lot of times, the game commission, it's actually like a dispatch number when you call, so you can get right, right to them.
Is this an instance where we would direct residents to the township website for the resident portal that they could?
I would say for that one, it's probably more timely. So we, if they submit it that way, we will receive it, but I would recommend they call directly.
I just think it'd be after hours if a fox is out, so.
After hours, right. You wouldn't want to use that portal, because, you know, we may not be monitoring it 24/7. So I would say call the, the game commission number, call the, go through like our NEXA dispatch service or something like that, as opposed to the, the new resident portal.
Like call the main township number and then?
Yes, and then, and then we'll receive it if it's an emergency immediately, or via email directly to us.
Very good. Chris, thank you for your comments. Anything else from the board? Moving on, there's no old business, agenda item 12, courtesy of the floor again, opportunity for any member of the public to comment. Yes, sir. Come on up, and again, give us your name and address for the record, please. Make sure you press the button. You know the drill.
Ray Prideyson, again, 1005 Bryan Street in South Whitehall. And I was, do enjoy coming to meetings. I've been gone for a few months out of, out of town, down Florida, so I'm home anyways, but I'm glad to be back. And forgive my ignorance, I don't want to stall too long, I just wanted to get some updates if I could. And I know I could go on the portal and read what's out there. Where's Dam? Do you have an update on what's happening at Where's Dam? I see a big tree about 30 feet high laying right in the center of the dam, the trunk and everything's leaning over top of it. I didn't know, that's, that's in the works to be replaced, correct?
No, the dam repairs have been completed last year. So yes, the, once the water slows down, we can walk out there, tie it off, and then we will pull it off with a loader to the side and then pick it out with a backhoe, cut it up and dispose of it, yes.
Okay, thank you. And number two, I got to ask this question. King Georgian?
The plans? The plans?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was looking wrong.
I jumped right on it.
When I go right by there, I often wonder, it's only been like three, four years or whatever. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the plans were recorded, I believe, about a month and a half ago. So, so the planning portion of the project is essentially over. The next phase would be permitting. No permits have been submitted to date, it's my understanding, but, but they are now authorized to proceed. That long-drawn-out planning process of getting the engineering done and the associated agreements is now over. So the next step would be, would rest with, with developer, the owner of the property, to submit the required building and zoning permits.
Okay, great. And then my last one is the, and again, forgive my ignorance, or the, the site next to Perkins, South Whitehall there, that was, that was Lance Timber Place, now it's going to be, was that Glick Road or Glick Avenue or something? There was something down there.
The church. They came in for a sketch plan, reviewed it. I don't think we've seen anything since.
Okay.
But I know fundraising's a big, big hurdle for them.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. Thank you, guys, did a great job.
Thank you, thank you for your comments tonight. Is there anyone online?
Yes, we have a comment online.
Hi, it's Marie North, 3025 Victoria Lane. I just wanted to make a positive comment and a shout out to her bender and the Public Works people for the paving work that was done on Peachtree Road, which is right down below where I live. It had become quite full of potholes and just had deteriorated greatly on the South Whitehall side. So they came through a couple of weeks ago and did the work, and it's very nicely done. The positive from it is that that road has become a real exercise area for people in our neighborhood, but in addition, other people have found it, and there are runners that use it. I walk it, my neighbors walk it, my husband uses it to bike down to the Ionton Rail Trail. So in an essence, it's, it's become a very, like a physical activity kind of thing for all of us here. And so it's, it's been great for walking because we don't have to dodge the potholes, and anyone who bikes doesn't have to dodge the potholes. So it was great work done. We really appreciated, and evidently, there was cooperation between the other two townships that also share maintenance of that road, North Whitehall and Whitehall. And I believe that was completed yesterday, I believe, the North Whitehall portion. So it looks great. Walking on it is great. I'll get my husband's opinion as far as biking is concerned. He hasn't gone down there yet with his bike, but I'm sure he's going to be thrilled. So, but I just wanted to let you know about, also let the commissioners know about the type of uses this farm road has. And it has become great for those of us in the neighborhood who walk. It's just been a real, a real positive. So I just wanted to put a shout out there to let you know that we appreciated the work that was done on that part of Peachtree.
Marie, thank you for your comment, and thank you for sharing that information with the board. It's, it's always wonderful to hear that the community has benefited from the work of the township. So thank you very much, and thank you, Herb. Please pass that along to the crews who have done that work. Thank you. Or anyone else online with questions? Okay. Moving on to agenda item 13, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. So moved. Motion, a second, on favor.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have no executive session. I need a motion to adjourn. Second, on favor.
Aye.
This motion is adjourned.